Good morning and welcome to our March 16th BOC zoning hearing. If you are willing and able, please join us for our invocation provided by Pastor Matt Carver of Burnt Hickory Church of Christ, followed by Officer Brown with Cobb Police with our pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the blessings and privileges of new life today. We thank you for this ability to assemble and deliberate and make decisions that best secure the flourishing and the well-being of those in our city. We ask in humility that today you give wisdom and insight and knowledge to all of the deliberations that will take place here. We pray that what is just, what is right, what is true, and what is good may fill these proceedings. And I pray that you would bless and enrich all of the participants here today. We ask and pray all of these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
This meeting is now called to order. I'm going to turn things over to John Peterson, who is our zoning manager, to walk us through the agenda for today.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Good morning. Today's hearing will be conducted as an in-person and also a virtual meeting. I'd like to take a moment to explain how the meeting format is going to unfold with the virtual participation. As these cases presented, we're going to recognize those onsite and virtual and support or oppose those case. For virtual attendees, to support or oppose a case or indicate if you wish to speak on a case, please type into your Q and A box the following commands. To support a case, you would want to type into your Q and A box SUP, then the case number. If you would also want to support and speak on a case, you would want to type into your Q and A box SUP, the case number, and then the word speak. If you would like to oppose a case, you would want to type in the following command in your Q and A box. You want to type in OPP to oppose a case, and then the case number. If you would also like to speak on a case that you're opposing, you would want to type into your Q and A box OPP, the case number, and then the word speak. For the speakers, you'll be called by name. Your line will be unmuted, and you will say your name, where you live, and affirm that you've been sworn in. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When these cases called, we would ask that the applicant stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call to see if anyone here in person is opposed to a case, and we would ask that that person also stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the record. After the recognizing of the applicant and any opposition, both parties will be asked to come forward to be sworn in so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. It's important to note that each side gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. Additionally, if there's more than one person wishing to speak on an issue, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to speak about because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after the presentation periods, the board will start to discuss the matter at hand. If there's another discussion, you may ask one or more people to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, continue, or hold the case at hand. Madam Chair and Board, there is a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-52 of 2020, Carl Edward Dills. This case was continued by the staff until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-52 of 2020 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-61 of 2020, Green Line Partners LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-61 of 2020 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-72 of 2020, North Point Ministries Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-72 of 2020 will not be heard today. ROD-1 of 2020, Atlantic Realty Acquisitions LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so ROD-1 of 2020 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-1 of 2021, Curly Family Homes LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-1 of 2021 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-6 of 2021, Lloyd Development Services. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-6 of 2021 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-8 of 2021, Beazer Homes LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-8 of 2021 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-11 of 2021, Venture Communities LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-11 of 2021 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-12 of 2021, Trayton LLC. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-12 of 2021 will not be heard today. Res zoning case Z-13 of 2021, Curly Family Homes LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the April 6th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-13 of 2021 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, there is one case on today's agenda which was scheduled to be heard, but the applicant would like to continue the case so they could continue dialogue with the neighbors, and that's case Other Business Number Eight of 2021, David Pearson Communities Incorporated. The applicant is asked in this case be continued until your April 20th hearing date so they can continue discussions with the neighbors.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes. Mr. Moore, could you come up and request the continuance and give us a little explanation, please?
Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant in this application. We had been requested this weekend. We'd been in conversations and discussions with our adjacent neighbor primarily in regards to stormwater issues in this particular area, and they had requested we do some additional study on one aspect of that as well as gather some additional information as it relates to stormwater impacts and how we are going about mitigating those. And we've been in conversations and studies with Dave Brayton of Cobb Stormwater, as well as this neighbor, but with the most recent additional request, we want to undertake that and continue to provide that information and make sure of those results as it relates to stormwater impacts. Given the timing of their request, we wanted to honor that since we've been in good discussions with them, and we were requesting this be continued. They also requested that this be continued so that those discussions could be ongoing, and we'll look to wrap this up within the next couple of weeks. So we would very much appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, good. And do you think all that will be done before the April zoning?
Yes, without a doubt.
Okay, because we did continue this last month because we got a late stip letter from the other attorney, and y'all really need to work on it before the April meeting.
We're doing all we can on our side. Thank you.
So with that, I make a motion that we continue Other Business Eight.
Is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn your cell phone on silent as the ringing does interfere with the broadcasts and presentations. And any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years immediately preceding the filing of a rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table in the back of this room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board on Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted to the board after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners, zoning hearing consent agenda for March 16th, 2021. First case on consent is rezoning case Z-39 of 2020, K O Management Incorporated is requesting a rezoning from CF and GC to RA5 for a subdivision in Land Lot 37 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Puckett Drive, east of Ableton Parkway, and on the north side of Ridge Ave and Old Gordon Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-39 to the RA5 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Parks Huff dated February 26th, 2021, which includes a site plan. And number two, staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict with the letter dated February 26th, 2021. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposed to rezoning case Z-39?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here in person or virtually opposed to rezoning case Z-39. Res zoning case Z-59 of 2020, Tamina A. Patwery requests a rezoning from RA20 to ONI for a professional office in Land Lot 745 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Atlanta Road, north of Lee Road. The Planning Commission recommends deletion of Z-59 to the RA15 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Adam Rosen dated February 24th, 2021. Number two, asphalt parking lot in front of the house to be removed per stipulation number four in the letter from Adam Rosen dated February 24th, 2021, or within one year of the Board of Commissioners zoning hearing case, or Commissioners hearing this case, whichever occurs first. Site plan to be approved by the zoning division manager. Number three, rear setback to be 20 feet. Number four, staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict with the application being deleted to RA15. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-59?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here in person or virtually opposed to rezoning case Z-59 of 2020. Res zoning case Z-3 of 2020, excuse me, Z-3 of 2021, Darren Martin requests a rezoning from PSC to RA12 for a single-family residence in Land Lot 699 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Carson Lane, southwest of the intersection of Carson Lane and Atlanta Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-3 to the RA12 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan last revised January 6th, 2021, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. And number two, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-3?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here in person or virtually opposed to rezoning case Z-3. Res zoning case Z-9 of 2021, Rutbick Emil de Mello requests a rezoning from CF and GC to NRC for a convenience store with retail sales and land lots 556 and 557 of the 19th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Austell Road, east of the intersection of Austell Road and East Callaway Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z-9 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, professional office, eating and drinking establishments, and neighborhood retail uses only. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Garvis L. Sanders Jr. dated February 19th, 2021, with deletion of the building elevations with the following changes. A, strike item number four. B, item number 11, add to the following prohibited uses: fuel sales, bail bond establishments, check cashing establishments, car washes, emissions and inspection stations, and nursery schools, and child daycare. C, item number 13, add to the following prohibited minor modifications: increase the overall building square footage, change that which is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning, or requires a variance or violates Cobb County ordinance. Number three, no loitering allowed, property owner and businesses to take necessary actions to prevent loitering. Number four, adherence to the Austell Road design guidelines with the district commissioner approving the final building elevations. Number five, fire department comments or recommendations. Number six, site plan review comments or recommendations. Number seven, stormwater management division comments or recommendations. Number eight, water and sewer division comments or recommendations. And number nine, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposed to rezoning case Z-9?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here in person or virtually opposed to rezoning case Z-9 of 2021.
John, I believe there's a stipulation that needs to be added?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Garvis. Thank you.
I'd like to add the following stipulation to Z-9. At no time should the dumpsters be located outside of the enclosure. And do I need to give you the paragraph number, John, or are you just going to add it into the record?
We'll just add that to the record.
Okay. At no time should the dumpsters be located outside of the enclosure, and the prohibited uses to include dollar stores and/or discount merchandise stores.
Okay.
That's it.
Got it.
Thank you.
And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LEP 9, John R. Smith requests a temporary land use permit to allow occupancy of an accessory structure in Land Lot 79 of the 18th District. The property is located on the north side of Old Alabama Road, west of the intersection of Old Alabama Road and Pisgah Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP 9 for six months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant to obtain from the Health Department a septic permit showing that the system meets their standard for the primary dwelling and the accessory structure. Septic permit to be provided to the zoning division manager. Number two, applicant to have building inspections to inspect the accessory structure, and if any deficiencies are found, building permits are to be obtained to bring the accessory structure up to code within six months. Number three, occupancy is only for as long as the mother resides in the primary dwelling on the property. At such time when the mother no longer resides in the primary dwelling, the accessory structure will be converted back to a garage or storage building or typical accessory structure that is allowed. Number four, in six months, when it's time to reevaluate the land use permit, the application fee shall be waived. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 9?
No.
Let the record show there's no one here virtually or in person opposed to LEP 9. Moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. SLEP 1, Colonial Pipeline Company requests a special land use permit for a fuel truck loading terminal in Land Lots 862 and 915 of the 19th District. The property is located at the terminus of Traymore Port Parkway, south of the intersection of Traymore Port Parkway and the East West Connector. The Planning Commission recommends approval of SLUP 1, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated February 24th, 2021, not otherwise in conflict. Number two, applicant agrees to provide regular and routine maintenance of the road frontage along the subject property, Traymore Point Parkway. Number three, applicant agrees to provide a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week contact person of the applicant to Puckett EMS to ensure open and transparent communications and opportunities for communications at any time. Number four, no more than two tanker trucks will exit the property at the same time with no less than five-minute intervals between any set of two tanker trucks. Note, the intent of this additional stipulation is to prevent three tanker trucks from being stopped at the same time at the traffic light at Traymore Port Parkway and East West Connector. This is to prevent blocking where ambulances may not be able to get out at the appropriate times. Number five, trucks used in the fueling center to access and exit via Traymore Port Parkway only. Access to Anderson Farm Road is prohibited. And number six, staff comments or recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposed to SLEP 1?
No.
Let the record show there's no one in person or virtually opposed to SLEP 1. And moving into the other business items on the consent agenda. Other business item number six of 2021 is to consider a reduction of lot size for D. Janato Homes LLC for property located at the northwestern intersection of Floyd Road and Anderson Mill Road in Land Lot 998 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, lot size reduced to 16,534 square feet. Number two, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. And number three, lot size may be reduced in the future equal to the amount of right-of-way acquired by Cobb DOT. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number six?
Yes, we have one.
Madam Chair and Board, we have one person opposed, so we'll pull that one off consent and put it in its regular order.
Thank you.
Other business item number nine of 2021 is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Barrett Farm Developers LLC regarding rezoning application Z-26 of 2017. The property is located at the southwest corner of Ernest Barrett Parkway and Bel Airico Road in Land Lot 173 of the 19th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, requested stipulation amendments are approved as stated in the background section of the other business packet. Number two, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. Number three, the district commissioner to approve the final landscape and fencing plan. And number four, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number nine?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed to other business item number nine, and that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you. With that, I ask that someone put forward a motion for us to approve the consent agenda as revised.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. And all those folks that were on consent agenda and that were approved, you're free to leave. Just please leave quietly as the hearing is still going on. Okay, moving into the continuing cases to be heard. First case is rezoning case Z-54 of 2020, Galaxy Childers Land LLC requests rezoning from RA30 to RA15 for a single-family residential subdivision in Land Lots 28 and 51 of the first district. The property is located on the east side of Childers Road, directly across from the terminus of Monet Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-54 of 2020? Please stand up and raise your hand. One more time, is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-54? Please stand up.
Say what they're going to say.
Madam Chair and Board, there's no one here either virtually or in person opposing rezoning case Z-54, so at this time I would ask the applicant to come forward to present their
Thank you. Here we go. Advance. Okay, thank you.
Sir, you've got 10 minutes.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Harry Joseph. Excuse me. My name's Harry Joseph, managing member of Galaxy Childers Land, the applicant for case Z-54. I'd like to take this morning to recap a few of the facts about our case, about our application. We are seeking rezoning of a 2.24-acre infill parcel in East Cobb from RA30 to RA15. All of the surrounding neighborhoods are zoned RA15. Our five-lot site plan currently requests no variances. Excuse me. All five lots exceed the minimum 15,000 square feet as measured from the outside curb of the road and will result in a density ratio below the allowable 2.5 units per acre set forth for the RA15 district. Our stormwater management plan has initially been reviewed by Cobb County Water and Sewer Engineering, and since our presentation to this body at the December hearing, we've resized our stormwater management facility and conducted a new hydrology study that shows our plan will reduce stormwater runoff, on average, over 40% after the homes are built. Although we're required not to increase the stormwater flows, our plan, we believe, will result in a significant reduction of existing stormwater flows, a major benefit to our adjacent neighbors. In the past, we had addressed several issues about density and a private subdivision road and our stormwater management plan. I'd just like to highlight those very briefly, but spend our time on some of the improvements we've made since our last presentation in cooperation with our neighbors. Excuse me, I should have had some water. First, about density. Our five-lot plan matches lot alignment so that we've got two of our lots to two neighbors on the north, three lots to three neighbors on the east, and two lots to three neighbors on the south. Our plan will also result in a density calculated ratio of 2.2 units per acre below the 2.5 units average maximum for the RA15 district. And as you can see, adjoining Coventry Green, their ratio is 2.0 units per acre, so we're within the same zoning density based on the fact that they're 14 times larger neighborhood. We talked briefly last time about the private road, and Cobb County has, in fact, approved private roads in proximity to this development. And this particular neighborhood includes the Hammerhead design that we have included for our site plan. One of the questions that came up was about maintenance of the private road for a small neighborhood, and as our neighborhood road will be built to the same standards as Cobb County public roads but will only serve five families, we believe that road will not require major maintenance for a longer period of time than would be typical for roads that serve a much denser population with more traffic. And as part of our stipulations, we have agreed to pre-fund some money for future road maintenance to ensure the homeowners association will have adequate funds to do the maintenance when it's required, which we think will be more than 15 years in the future. So I'd like to talk a little bit about stormwater management. This property was developed in the 1960s, mid-'60s, more than 50 years ago, and it was developed with the existing house that's on it now, and this predates the neighborhood development immediately around it. So the stormwater flow currently that has created some challenges for the Coventry Green neighbors has really been unchecked and unmanaged for 50 years. So our plan is to come in, improve the stormwater flows, and we'd like to share a little bit of that with you. Currently, the stormwater drains off the site and flows ranging from .42 to 1.82 cubic feet per second. After development, we expect- After development, we expect that the stormwater will be managed by the heavy blue line, the water, stormwater will be directed toward the street to an underground detention facility. And you can see the flows after that is done have been reduced as much as 72% in some We did the same analysis for 100-year stormwater flows with essentially the same result in terms of substantial reductions in stormwater through most sectors of the property. You can see by this summary of the hydrology analysis what the effects are, pre-development and post-development, both for 25-year and 100-year calculated outflows, and they average over 40% in both cases. So we believe this stormwater management plan will be a significant benefit to the neighbors who have had some problems in the past. I'd like to talk briefly about landscape buffer. Our site has a substantial number of pleasing, existing, mature trees, and some evergreen vegetation along the borders of the property. However, we engaged RAA Design, a professional landscape architecture and land planning firm, to advise us on how to address the county's desire to provide a green buffer, our neighbors' desire for a green buffer, and then how to protect, to the extent reasonable, the mature trees that are there. They helped us by developing this plan, which includes a mix of eight-foot trees and, in the direct line of sight for the neighbors, 12-foot trees, so that this will hopefully accomplish both objectives, county desires and good standards, and neighborhood desires and good standards. We've gone through this with the neighbors. They are generally accepting of this plan, but we both agree, the neighbors and us, that we're going to tweak this a little bit more with the Commissioner's approval. Our desire is to tweak this a little more with the Commissioner's approval. The heavy dotted lines you see on this graphic represent some cross-sections that our architect did, just to give you a flavor for what it would look like when the homes are built. These cross-sections are not representative of the specific buildings or homes that are built, they're just representative of the type and massing. But you can see on these cross-sections how the lay of the land and the landscape tree buffer should provide good visual buffering to our neighbors. That basically ends the primary part of our presentation today. I wanted to just confirm that to develop an aesthetically pleasing neighborhood on this property with the infrastructure required to accomplish the improvement in stormwater management, protect water quality, create a neighborhood that complements our neighbors that are well-established in the adjoining neighborhoods, requires five lots to be feasible. And we wish to offer a set of stipulations that if our application to R-15 is approved, then we're willing to agree to, and we have hard copies if you desire to see them, but I'll stop right there and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time this morning.
John, I presume there's no one else who's called in for comment?
Madam Chair, I want to officially to oppose this, and I believe the neighbors that are here are in support of the conditions that are going to be read into the record.
Okay, thank you. With that, Commissioner Richardson.
All right. Everybody bear with me on this one, but I'd like to put a motion to approve with the following stipulations, as agreed. We've got dead, diseased, well, yeah, approval of the site plan pending any major changes going to district commissioner approval, that dead, diseased, hazardous, dying trees be replaced on schedule as required by the county arborist, that final elevations will be approved by district commissioner, that the developer commits to maintain liability insurance until the HOA is formed and secures replacement insurance, that the final landscaping is also pending approval by the neighbors, developers, and district commissioner, that there's a required max 12-foot floor depth of decks, that all accessory structures be 15 feet from the rear property lines, that there is also pending final approval of the stormwater plan by the district commissioner and the county, and that, of course, this case is subject to all staff comments in the zoning analysis. There is one more thing as well, apologies, that the HOA will maintain and repair the private road and the stormwater management system.
All agreeable.
Fantastic. Well done. Motion.
I have a, I will second it, and I have one question for discussion, if I may. Under final, in your presentation, you said there were no variances, but in the final zoning staff recommendations, and I don't know if this has been corrected or if it's accurate, but number five says variance only for reduced front setback. Is that still?
In our updated and filed site plan, we do not have a variance for front yard setbacks. We are meeting the county standard for that zoning district.
Okay. Sorry, I guess my final analysis isn't updated, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
And then, John, I'm not sure if this is for you, or I know Michael Francis is in the back. I have a question because in the DOT comments, it says that it's going to be recommending private streets, yet in staff comments, which was included in your motion, you're saying that the site plan to be approved by the district commissioner and the requested amount of public road frontage per lot. So are we doing public or private? Or how will this be addressed?
These are private roads, so they're going to be county, they're going to be built to county standards.
Okay, so they're still going to be private, but you're going to have them have the public road frontage per lot, correct?
No, they're going to have private road frontage for the lots that are in the rear, and public road frontage for the lots that are in front.
I'm sorry, John, can you help him speak into the microphone? I can't hear you clearly.
Okay. The lots that are along the front are going to have public road frontage, the three lots in the back have private road frontage because they don't go out to the public road.
Okay, so I don't know if we want to clarify that in your motion, because the way I read this, it was like all the lots needed it, that's why I was asking the question. Is that something we need to further clarify, John, or?
No, as long as this is zoned to the site plan, then it's on the site plan that gets approved. So we don't really need to clarify it, in my opinion. It's shown on the plan.
Is it on the site plan that way, then?
The private roads, yes.
But with the public road frontage on the three in the front?
Yes, from what, yes, that was what I understood. I will defer to staff.
Are there any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I would like a copy of the handout that you said that you have for each of us.
Thank you. I have to ask our attorney to provide a copy. I didn't have it at my hands.
Thank you. So there was a motion, is there a second?
I don't already say.
A second, thank you. We had discussion. All of those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
It's real, and these are all the designated columns, please. Thank you.
Next case is rezoning case Z-10 of 2021, Stacy Bagwell, request a rezoning from NS to NRC for a convenience store of fuel sales and retail sales in Land Lot 15 of the 17th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Oster Road, south of Millwood Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here in person opposed to rezoning case Z-10? Let the record show there's no one here in person or virtually opposed to rezoning case
Good morning, Garvis, I'm sorry.
No, that's not Madam Chair. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams, I'm with the law firm of Sams, Larkin, and Huff, and I do represent the applicant and the property owner concerning this application for rezoning. Just a suggestion, there was one man that was here at the Planning Commission hearing in opposition that represented the neighborhood that surrounds us on two sides. We incorporated all of his suggestions and, of course, CC'd him on the revised stip letter of the 10th of this month, and incorporated there all of the Planning Commission's recommendations as well. So since it was on the consent the first time, and he's not here now, is there any way we can convert this to the consent agenda?
Not while you're there. We'd love to hear this.
Well, the more TV 23 time I get, the better it'll offer me. My mother watches, but, no. She doesn't like people that are mean to me. If you prefer, I can make a presentation.
Certainly. I'll defer to the Commissioner. Would you like to hear the case, or would you like this move to consent?
Oh, I don't, unless you guys do, I'm very familiar with the case. I just have a couple of stipulations to add.
Certainly, we can hear your stipulations and then potentially move for this to be on consent.
Okay. Okay. Much like the others, dollar stores and/or discounted merchandise stores are to be included as prohibited uses. At no time should the dumpsters be located outside of the enclosure. District Commissioner to approve all building, fuel canopy, and sign architecture, and the six-foot black metal fence instead of a six-foot black vinyl-coated chain-link fence. And that was all, Madam Chair.
Okay. Are you okay with those stipulations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Well, would you like to make a motion that we put this on our consent agenda, Commissioner?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that Z-10 is added to the consent agenda with the revised stipulations.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner, may I add one more thing? With this, we submitted as a part of our revised stipulation letter what we've called a safety plan. And a safety plan came into existence really through Commissioner Burrows' adoption and championing of the purpose-built student house classification. But we carried it one step further when you were district commissioner in for with a convenience store at City View and Six Flags. At Commissioner Sheffield's request, we did that here, too. And so it's kind of a divergence from the normal operating procedures, and I'm not trying to create work for any other zoning attorneys or anybody else, but it certainly didn't seem like it would be a bad idea to do that with all convenience stores.
I agree. I did observe that stipulation, which I thought was thoughtful in light of some history we've had with those sites, so I appreciate you doing that, and perhaps that is something we consider with.
Just a thought. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Sams, before you leave, the actual motion was to add it to the consent agenda. It's supposed to have been added to the consent agenda, I think you actually now need to vote on it. And really, when we already voted on the consent agenda, you could have just voted on it as it was, but the motion was to add it, so I think now you need to actually take a vote on the application itself, so.
I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm having a difficult time hearing you and John today. It could be me, but can you clarify what you're asking or sharing?
We haven't resolved the case at this point in time. The motion was to add it to the consent agenda. Of course, the consent agenda has already been voted on, and so I was just saying, now you need to actually vote on the case itself.
Okay.
But then I made a comment that you didn't need to necessarily add it to the consent agenda since the consent agenda was already been concluded, you could have just voted on it at that point in time.
Okay, thank you, Bill, I appreciate it. Okay. So with that, Commissioner, would you like to move that we approve Z-10?
I make a motion that we approve Z-10.
All right. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have, I just have one question. We didn't hear the case. So, but we're adding it to consent because we didn't hear it, so can we approve it without hearing it?
Yes, you can, if the board elects to do that, sure. Yes.
But we still need to go back and re-approve it being on consent because the consent agenda was already approved without this case being on it. That's what Bill's saying.
Okay, so we have a motion, second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're removing other business item, is that correct? Six, okay. Okay, well, we hear other business item six, I see other business item 10.
Moving into other business on today's agenda, first case is other business item number six of 2021, which is to consider a reduction of lot size for D. Gernato Homes LLC, a property located at the northwestern intersection of Floyd Road and Anderson Mill Road, Land Lot 998 of the 19th District. Earlier, there was one person here opposed. Would the applicant and the opposition please come forward and be sworn in?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. My name's, and just for a little clarification, John, it's, I think it was a typo, it's D. Gurnat, it's two Ts, there's not an L on the end.
Okay.
It's two Ts on the end, so D. Gurnat Homes. But my name's David Gurnat, I appreciate y'all hearing me. This case, this lot is an outlot that was originally owned by W.T. Gann, bought attractive land at that intersection in 1945, and his heir, Barbara Gann Snyder, is, this is the last parcel of land that she owns over there. It's on the corner of Floyd Road and Anderson Mill Road there. And I tried to go through zoning and to work through this because I really feel like it could be, there's a case for it to be grandfathered in, that it was this size and current configuration prior to 1972 when the R-20 zoning was adopted. I have deeds that are brought here through the deeds records that I've searched, and the property immediately to the west there, 1160 Anderson Mill Road. The long legal description, there's a deed that was recorded in 1956 that has been used in subsequent closings since that time, and it has not changed. The property to the north, owned by Mr. Patel, at 4272 Floyd Road, there's a deed in its current long legal that was filed in 1969 that has been used in subsequent sales and closings. This individual parcel has never been sold since its original acquisition by Mr. Gann in 1945. And so this, the land here in its current configuration only could have reduced by DOT improvements below the 20,000 square foot, if it was ever 20,000 square feet at the beginning, or prior to 1969, I apologize. And there have been some DOT improvements, and I pursued to try to find out how much land was taken through those. And unfortunately, it was before the electronic records, the on-base system that Cobb County DOT uses, they don't have a record of how much land was taken. The deed that was filed doesn't specify how much land was taken through the condemnation and eminent domain. She suggested I reach out to the engineer who did that project, which I pursued that, that engineering firm is no longer in business. I've gone a long way to try to prove this and find it, because I did find an engineer on LinkedIn that actually houses records for that former engineering company. I contacted him to try to get record of how much land was taken through the eminent domain, and I've not gotten a response on that. And so I know that it is well within the Commissioner's authority to grant a lot-size reduction up to 25%, which our 16,500 square feet is above the 25%, a 25% reduction that would have taken it to 15,000 square feet. And so, excuse me, I just, you know, I'm a, been building homes in Cobb County for 28 years, you know, for other companies, started my own company, you know, two years ago, and, you know, would like to be able to build a home here. So I do have the deeds here from those different properties adjacent to it, if anyone has any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, I understand there was someone who was in opposition?
One person.
One person.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Vijay Patel, I'm the owner of the north side of this plot. My, my thing is the DOT, or when the road expansion will happen, this lot will be very small to build that building. And it's not having enough frontage. And I think your art quantity says 175 foot, and I think it's way less, so it should not be. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
John, what is staff's position on this?
Madam Chair, the staff recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the request. And the conditions would be subject to the lot size being reduced to 16,534 square feet. Number two, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. And number three, lot size may be reduced in the future equal to the amount of right-of-way acquired by Cobb DOT.
Okay, thank you, John. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. Apparently, this property, you know, it should be grandfathered in. There has not been any sales since 1945 on the property and we're talking about a difference of approximately 3,400, 3,400 square feet, based on staff recommendation and based on what the applicant is looking to do with the property to build a home. I am in support of this application and I make a motion that we approve it.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I support it, you know, whenever we talk about varying from our code, variance typically applied under hardship and you would consider this to be a hardship, that the reduction may have been caused by a traffic project, not by any doing of the owner. So I'm in support. With that.
The zoning law might not be.
The zone, yes, for other businesses, it shouldn't change the zoning. That's my understanding when we have other businesses, changing a condition and not the zoning.
So any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner?
Well, and then within code, John, please correct me if I'm wrong, it does allow for up to a 25% variance on the lot size, correct, John?
The BZA can grant a lot size reduction up to 25%.
Thank you. All right, with that, all those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item is other business item number 10 of 2021, which is to consider a site plan amendment for Crem Development Incorporated regarding rezoning applications, Z-104 of 2007. The property is located on the east side of Powers Ferry Road, north of Terrimole Road in Land Lot 924 of the 17th District. Is there, is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case, or, excuse me, to other business case number 10? Let the record show there's no one here in person and there's no one here virtually opposed to other business item number 10. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning, my name is Archie Wanamaker, I'm with Crem Development, we're the applicant. And we are proposing this morning a 1,400 square foot, three-bay building to be constructed on the former McDonald's property on Powers Ferry Road at 1305. And we've submitted our site plan and the building will be constructed, it's, it'll have a brick or a stacked stone base with an ephesus siding, very attractive, they've got 550 locations across the country, about 20 here in Georgia, or 20 in Atlanta, 25 in Georgia. Done extensive market research, based on the demographics, based on the existing competition and traffic flows, we feel that it'll be a successful development and we're excited about doing it. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Appreciate it. There's no opposition? All right, we're through with your presentation, sir. Thank you. But there'd be no opposition. John, what staff's recommendation?
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet, subject to the Fire Department comments contained in the other business packet, subject to the site plan contained in the other business packet. District Commissioner to approve the final building architecture and all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect.
All right, Commissioner Richardson?
Motion to approve, along with the staff comments.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I just want to clarify that staff comments and recommendations, all the other stipulations on the property remain in effect. Okay, very good. Bill, do you have any questions?
You had my question.
Oh, okay, very good.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, the motion passes 5-0.
Okay, last item on today's agenda is other business item number 11 of 2021, which is to consider a stipulation amendment for the Margaret A. Cahaly Living Trust regarding rezoning applications, Z-63 of 2018. The property is located on the east side of Holly Springs Road and on the south side of Davis Road in Land Lots 458, 479, and 480 of the 16th District. The applicant is present, is there anyone here in person opposed to other business item number 11? Madam Chair and Board, there is no one here in person opposed to other business item number 11. There is one person who is virtual, who is opposed and would like to speak when it's their turn to speak in opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, greetings again, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name's Garvis Sams, I'm the law firm of Sams, Larkin, and Huff here in Marietta and have for quite some time represented Margaret Cahaly. The applicant here is Mrs. Cahaly's living trust that actually owns the property at issue. Ms. Cahaly's owned it for quite some time and her family owned a good bill of better property in the, in the area. Ms. Cahaly is not here today, she's very strictly following COVID procedures and requirements and is a little reticent about being in public and I'm sure she's watching on television and I'm also sure if I make some missteps, she will key in real quickly. But this is probably the most straightforward application that you've had, you've had today in terms that it's one request, it's not a request for variance or special land use permit or even a rezoning. It's simply to revisit on one point a highly negotiated rezoning that occurred and was approved back in, in February 2019 in Commissioner Burrows' district. And we're simply asking that you reconsider and either extend, modify, or eliminate, preferably an extension, the reversion clause that was placed on the zoning at the time. The genesis of the reversion clause, interestingly, was Mrs. Cahaly, who wanted to make sure that if things went awry and it didn't go to close, that, that she would be in a position to be able to terminate it so that from a tax perspective, her property would go back to R-30 as opposed to R-15, which is what it is on now. Let me tee this up just a little bit better for you. You've got a handout and it shows you the relative positioning of the property on the future land use map, but you can see it has direct contiguity to R-15. Then there's other mixed zonings in the area, R-20 and, and others. Originally, we had asked for a rezoning to the RSL classification for this 4.3 acre tract. And that was a 3.72 units per acre. And this property was not owned in our, was considered an arterial at the time, so there really wasn't the, the groundwork wasn't in place in terms of where your ordinance provides for this to be properly positioned for RSL. So what we did is through our negotiations with Ashmore Subdivision, which is again contiguous into our east, we negotiated a number of 10, 10 homes, which is at a maximum density of 2.3 units per acre, which fits within the low-density residential classification under the future land use map. Today, it's been, depending by whose calendar you go by, it's been a year since COVID, changed our world and a lot has happened to the world of development, a lot has happened with this property and in terms of the developer who has it under contract. And that specifically relates to developmental issues and developmental constraints that I'll get into in just a minute. This property has its, its ample shares of developmental challenges, including stormwater management and including the fact that, and I don't want to cast any aspersions on any other developers who may have worked in this area in the past, but as it turns out, the final as-built subdivision plat for Ashmore is four feet off the correct mark and places Ms. Cahaly's property in a problematic position with respect to ultimately connecting to sewer. And it may not sound like much and it may sound like a problem, if you throw enough money at it, you can probably deal with it and that's true, but we're trying to figure out the best engineering, the best management and practices approach to be able to, to get this done. So the whole world's been changed by COVID, I can't blame that particularly on this, but getting engineers to meet face-to-face with engineers, not necessarily through Zoom, has been difficult for us, particularly with the subterranean issues involved with access to the, to the sewer. As I mentioned, ever a prudent woman in negotiations, I was representing her in litigation, actually 20 years ago. When we presented this, the only people that presented were me and Mr. Charles Sprayberry, the Cobb County School District, regarding the, the number of students to be in school. We had no opposition then with, from Ashmore, our next-door neighbor. We had talked with all the other surrounding subdivisions. I believe and Commissioner Burrows can correct me on this if I'm wrong, I know we held it once and maybe twice in order to get to where we got in terms of this being approved back February 20 years ago. Now we sent out 327 notifications to everyone again, which, which rightfully so stirred up a lot of interest in the property, we've answered a lot of phone calls and we think we've given everyone the appropriate, the appropriate answers and not to minimize this, but it is simply an affirmation or a ratification, if you will, of something that you approved two years ago after an extensive amount of negotiations and discussions with, with area residents. I got one of the most unusual emails I've ever gotten in my life on this and I'm quite certain it couldn't possibly be the speaker that's going to talk about this, but I got one, I'm going to quote from it. And it was in response to the notification letter we sent out. He said, "Thank you, as my property and its value and its use is most directly impacted by this request, being across the street, which it's not, it's over 1,100 feet away, is your client amenable to $25,000 as consideration for me supporting the proposal?" And I'm not going to name names, I've been doing this 42 years, I've never, I've never run into, into that set of circumstances. And I don't want to, I don't want to endorse the fact that orange is the new and black, so I have no interest in that, there was only one neighbor that did that and he'll remain nameless, but you've got your policies, I can't think of one of these being turned down where we've got legitimate developmental reasons why, why it should not be. So we are asking that it either be lengthened by whatever amount you deem is the most appropriate. I will say that we're poised and, and ready for development, we see that happening in the next, in the next six months. I wouldn't necessarily want that to guide your considerations, but I figured you were going to ask that question, so I might as well answer it anticipatorily. So a highly negotiated zoning case, we're asking for one thing and it's taken me a heck of a long time to say it, but we do respectfully request that you take your planning staff's recommendation for approval on this, Madam Chair.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, I understand, there's someone here in opposition?
We have one virtual speaker in opposition, Carter Robinson, you are unmuted.
Okay, we're having difficulty hearing him.
In the case of the speaking online. Is that?
Reason for this to be extended.
Okay, sir, and this is, this is Chairwoman Cupid, as we did not hear you from the beginning of your comments, I'm sorry to have you begin over again, but for the benefit of Commissioners and for our applicant, we'd like to be able to hear your comments from the beginning. There may be a delay if he's watching this on YouTube. Okay, thank you.
Is he on? Opposition is to the lack of civil engineering that's going on here, especially ingress and egress to this property, and we don't see any need for it to be extended, in fact...
Sir, if you can hear me, this is Chairwoman Cupid. We are unable to hear your comments in entirety, your, your voice is coming into us in the BLC meeting room and then it's going out. We have someone who's onsite, who is attempting to reach you. For those of us who are with us in the audience who are watching, please bear with us as we try to get ahold of the individual that called in for opposition as we want to make sure that we have opportunity to hear his comments and consider that in our deliberation.
Madam Chair, if you may, connection, I'll, I'll hang around, so if you need...
Please, thank you, appreciate that, thank you.
I requested, he has read our request to propose it to this body and I'm asking him to call in.
Okay, so we're asking him to call in?
Reasonably inadequate data. We do not want to see this extended, we'd like to see it go back to the art.
Yes, Commissioner? Okay, why don't we take a brief, two-minute recess so we can try to reach him by phone and then we'll come back. Thank you.